Welcome everyone to the Monday, January tenth, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the Bradleboro Planning Commission.
I'm on television with the prior.
I call this meeting to order. Excuse me, there's a, everybody have an agenda? Do you guys need anything from our paperwork? You want, you have everything that copies over there, but okay. Well, the agenda review, the hits and the highlights are that we're gonna go over the, after our usual stuff, we're gonna go over the two thousand and eleven calendar, which is essentially planned out till sometime July, August. And then we're gonna have a public work session, which will involve going over the town plan chapter outlines. So that's it in a nutshell. First order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting, which was November twenty-second, two thousand and ten.
I'm.
That's our, I'm sorry, that was our last meeting that we had a quorum for. We did have a meeting on December thirteenth, and we had sort of a hit or miss quorum. So those are notes, not minutes. So, so is there a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty-second?
I move we approve the minutes from November twenty-second, two thousand and ten.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just the change that I mentioned last time, just to be sure that it got in on page three, under J, Public Engagement for Economic Development, under the third bullet. When the town plan consultants have reviewed each of the various, and to add in their existing independent plans.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we've passed the minutes from November twenty-second.
Do we need to pass the notes?
Nope.
No, really?
No, you can't pass notes. I mean, you can, but that's.
No note passing in our meeting.
School, and that's naughty.
But those are notes. We didn't, actually, I recall, we also didn't vote on anything at that meeting as well. It was a great meeting, though. I would like to note that.
It was.
Thank you for coming and drawing over the arts work with us, and I thought it was very productive. So, the next item is announcements. Just, I'll mention a couple of things that I've gotten in my emails. The Wyndham Housing Trust has got an application in to be involved with the Algiers waterline extension. And I don't know, is that an Act two fifty permit application, or something? District environmental, something?
It is, and I'm not sure if it's covered by Act two fifty, but there's special, I think there's special permitting for waterlines, so, yeah.
So that, that's just something that has come me with about a hundred other people with that, an email about that, so.
Yeah, I can't recall what the exact section that's under.
And, and that's the, the Bradleboro Town Water line, right, that's going.
This history does.
Proposed to go to Algiers for, to help.
Yeah.
The Village Center.
So, yeah, so I know, if I, if I got it right, there's now a water line that runs from a reservoir, a huge tank that is part of the Bradleboro system that's located at the highest point at the exit one industrial park.
Mm-hmm.
And a line was run from there to Cornwall Dairy at the Delta Campus. And I think this is an add-on to that line that runs down Route five, parallel to Route five, into Algiers Village, and would provide water to the, what is referred to as the Algiers Fire District.
Mm-hmm.
Which already has, I think already has sewer. And that's related to an earlier connection of Bradleboro Town Water to the visitor's center at Vernon.
Right.
But.
Oh, Guilford, but, yeah.
Yeah, Guilford, yeah. But it's, yeah, it's coming, it's, but this, the fresh water's coming from a different line, basically.
Which is good.
Yes, said like that, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So, that's just something that has come to me, and I, I told everybody I would mention those things as they, as they show up. Another thing that I have gotten something about, and other people may have too, I don't know, but there's a, just an announcement that Vermont Youth Conservation Corps is soliciting projects. The, the proposals are due the fifteenth of January, and they've gotten some federal money, apparently, to do work on paths, trails, and other transportation connection efforts. So it's, it's kinda late, but, you know, in a few days, that, that will be up, but they're, they're looking for projects. So, and as you may recall.
They did the retreat trails, didn't they?
The retreat trails, they also did the work on, on the Crosby Brook.
Oh.
They did that remediation.
Buck Mountain Road.
Remediation work, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, if there's anything that you've heard about, or that somebody's looking for help, they're, they also said that if, if a project isn't, isn't picked, but is still gonna go forward, that they have some, some other circumstances that they can meet, you know, like a lower cost work that they can do for people to make projects move forward and stuff like that. And then the other announcement, which is listed on our, our agenda, is that there's a vacancy on the planning commission. That's Kevin's seat, formerly Kevin's seat. And has that been filled, or?
No.
No. It was, the select board announced it at their January fourth meeting.
Last Tuesday.
Yeah. They are accepting applications until January twenty-eighth, and they will appoint on February first. That's the schedule.
So if anyone has anybody in mind that they would just love to sit next to frequently, let them know.
And that seat, just for anybody in the public or the viewing audience who wants to know, is Kevin's seat goes till June of this year, so it's really just a six-month seat, and then can be reapplied for, but if someone wanted to just do that short amount of time, not that I'm encouraging that per se, but sometimes that's enough to give somebody a feel for whether they wanna take on a bigger piece. So just so folks know that that's a, filling out the end of Kevin's term.
Okay, thank you. So, other business, or other announcements? Any other announcements? Jim?
Hi.
I have one that we got today. The, what is it, the Vermont Council for.
Rural Development.
For Rural Development, yeah. The Vermont Council for Rural Development sent down an email looking for people to join their Vermont Working Landscape Partnership. And so if you're interested in seeing their five-point plan and joining the partnership, you can find that information at their website, which is VTRural.org.
And you can join as an individual, or you can join as an organization.
We're not allowed to say working landscape, right? Is that a prohibited term?
I thought we were encouraged to say working landscape.
Oh, are we?
Yeah.
It's.
Either we can't say it or we're encouraged, so I'm sure it's one of them.
There's, there's a misunderstanding here someplace, but, okay.
I remember that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it was labeled as plan to speak, and what did it mean, or, and questions about what does it, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
And I think Sue and I approved it where we were planned, because we failed to answer it in any meaningful way.
There you go.
We did things like, you know, working landscape.
Yeah.
Working on the landscape.
The landscape. Yeah, it didn't go well.
Okay. All right, well, we'll try to keep that in mind for the future.
Right.
So, other business would be the next thing, and as far as I know, there's no other business besides the business that we're up to. And public comment, doesn't look like there are any public here except for the arts public. You know what I mean? So, and there's a whole section for that coming up. So, if you would like to, members of the public, if you would like to comment about something besides what's on the agenda that you're here to speak about, if you're here to speak about something else, here's your time.
We're excited for the conversation about the arts that's coming up.
Okay.
All right.
All right. We are too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So the next item is the two thousand and eleven calendar. Excuse me, and.
It's gonna take a whole hour to talk about a calendar. Excuse me for being rude, but.
We don't know what's gonna happen, do we? It may not take a whole hour. But it's, there are a couple of calendars, at least, that we're gonna talk about. So, so the first section here is the planning commission meetings calendar. And as everybody knows, we have postponed the deadline, really a self-imposed deadline in a lot of ways, for the completion of the town plan, to the point that we can take it to the, first to the public here, and then to the select board, until sometime in probably July, August. And so this calendar for us is designed to be a series of outlines, and then a period of time later, drafts of chapters. And so, and, and if everybody has referred to this, basically, the idea is that in all the chapter areas, we either have had larger discussions, and there have been community discussions, or there are going to be some, you know, for each chapter. So, and in some of these cases, we have, we have had two or three planning commission discussions already on them, so. Jim?
I just have a question. So, so like tonight, we're covering these three arts, natural resources, and agriculture.
Yep.
So we've already had a discussion about these at least once, most of them, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then we're gonna discuss more tonight and make final decisions? And then who creates the drafts? Is that you guys?
Yep.
Points to you.
We, we will.
And so the, the idea with doing it this way is that the commissioners, and anyone else who is interested, will hopefully review the outlines ahead of time, have questions and comments and concerns when we talk about them, about the outlines at our meetings. We will invite the public and any subgroups of the public, might say, like, like committees or other organizations, to come and comment on the outline. What we're gonna try to do is hold the outline open until Fridays, the Friday after our meetings, so that anything that, you know, we may think of, or somebody else may think of between Monday and Friday, that, that you didn't think of tonight, or our discussion raised other questions or, or comments, we're not trying to start from scratch like we'd never talked about this.
Sure.
But we're trying to flesh out and flesh out any other comments. And so, so, but, but in the interest of moving the process along, the department would like our comments in by Fridays, so that things can proceed. So, for instance, with anything that you guys might, and, and anybody that you know that might wanna comment on things, it'd be great to get them into the department by Friday, so that this can proceed, so.
By the Friday before these meetings are happening?
Friday after.
Right, yeah.
And, so that's kind of the general idea, and we'll probably have a similar kind of rule of thumb for drafts as well, where, you know, we wanna make sure that everybody reviews drafts ahead of time, maybe write comments, even contact Sue and Rod even before a meeting if you want, but at least bring those to the meeting, and then any further comments, attempt to get them into the office by the Friday following our meeting. So, and that kind of procedure will make this schedule work. It's, and it's, it's several months, but it's a pretty tight timeline in a lot of ways, so. So would you like to speak to the outline and draft formats, and, and talk about the calendar a little bit, Sue or Rod?
Seems pretty subtle. I don't think I can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, one thing, especially when we get to the draft, you know, don't wanna spend time at the meeting editing the minor things, the spelling errors, the grammatical, that kind of thing. So, you know, mark up your copy, I can take it, get it back to you, but let's not spend our meetings doing that.
Yeah, I think the purpose that we've been thinking about a lot, the purpose of the meetings, is to really respond to the, particularly the outline, is to respond to the overall direction that the chapter's taking. And then, when the draft comes back, you know, presumably, if we've done a reasonable job, it'll conform pretty well to the outline. Where it doesn't, then there's topics for comment, and it's possible that we will veer off the outline for a particular reason, or we'll have trouble, and that will be noteworthy, and we'll try and talk about it at the time. So what we really want is substantive kind of comments about the outline for the draft, not, you know, that diagram's too small, or that sentence is too long, or that, which is, that'll, that's much further off at this point. And then the only other comment that I'd wanna make is, in case people are wondering about the sort of the hole, if you look at the, if you get down to the twentieth of March, all of a sudden you begin to see some holes in the calendar, and the purpose there is twofold. One is that in many ways, those are bigger, more complex chapters to, to grapple with, that would, you know, so things slow down a little bit there. They slow down because in some instances, we've got, both in the economic development and land use category, we've got the consultant's work that's got its own schedule that we're sort of coordinating with. And then the last thing I'd say is that we're expecting to have small group meetings around some of those topics with outside entities, and then encourage public participation in regular scheduled planning commission meetings to discuss those matters as well. So that's, that explains a little bit what those spaces are for. And those, we make those notes at the bottom of the page then. And then the last thing is just that there are two public hearings that need to be scheduled for June and July, which lies outside this calendar.
Anybody have any questions, concerns, comments about the calendar itself?
Do you wanna move on to the, does anyone have any comments or questions about the calendar provided for us by Hope Planning on the commercial land use implementation strategy?
I just don't understand the color coding, and there's no key here for what all these different.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Icons, or whatever you call them, the dots and the stars, what they all mean in the different colors, that would have been helpful.
Stars and meetings. And just, the stars of public meetings, basically, of public forums. The green, the green caterpillars are stretches of office work. The yellow caterpillar is talking to us, and the red boxes are meeting with the select board and getting things done. And then the green, the green ball, to keep with Bradleboro terminology, is conclusion of work.
What's the difference between the green or the red? I mean, there's a green, green lines, I assume, mean that's when the work is being done.
The red, there's only one red line, and that's for possible online input, that hasn't been decided yet, so that would be, that would be a particular kind of survey work that they're looking to do.
Yeah, I think the red, I don't really recall that there was a, a legend to the colors, but I think the red is, a lot of it's work that other people will comment on, so it's some sort of outreach output.
Yeah, I think he's, I think it's framed in a way, but, there's a couple of things. One is that it's a consortium that's doing it, that's come together to do the work. So there's a period of time where they're gonna be swapping things amongst themselves, commenting on their own work, and then they'll also be looking to us and others for comment on that work as well, so that's why you get those sort of extended lines, rather than just points.
And is the output going to be used in the town plan?
Yes.
Or is it?
It certainly, yeah, the intention here is that it will frame both part of the economic development chapter and the land use chapter.
Okay.
And then, we also expect it to sort of have a life of its own beyond the town plan, but directly, it plugs into those two chapters.
Just to remind everybody, a lot of what the purpose of this, this work is, is to try to integrate the Putney Road, West Bradleboro, and Canal Street plans, turns out, into the town plan as a whole, because they've been just sort of added, add-ons to the town plan.
Yep.
Which was expedient at the time, but not very.
Well-integrated.
Yep.
Thank you. So, and something else that has, that has happened is that the BABB is also working with a consultant that's studying primarily downtown retail stuff, but, but trade in the whole market, and economic opportunities in the whole market. And so their network, you know, the consultants for this, for this project are also getting information from that work. So I think it's gonna be a great thing to bring a lot of different sources of information together, and ideas, and.
And that's almost concluded, I think, the downtown study, yeah.
That is the, yeah, I think that they'll be getting a white paper.
In the next, within the next month, and that's it.
Okay.
So you may have noticed on the schedule that there's a public forum for January, and it's actually been scheduled for Janu-, Monday, January thirty-first, six-thirty to eight-thirty, at the Marlboro Graduate Center, room two E.
Yep.
And at that, the consultant will be presenting the existing plans, so it's the West Bradleboro Master Plan, the Putney Road Master Plan, and the Canal Street Gateway Report, which I think is from two thousand and one, which is probably lesser known. And so the public will be invited, he'll review the plans, and then there'll, I think, be some small groups to see, you know, is this still, where is the public with these plans? Is this still the desired direction? To get some input on that.
So did you say January first is the first of the Marlboro Tech Center?
January thirty-first, yeah.
January thirty-fifth.
At the Graduate Center, yeah.
You don't have it have a time yet, do you?
Six-thirty.
I'd just like to request that there be plenty of announcement about this, not just once, maybe a couple of different times, so that people hear it and get it, knowing the way people sometimes don't get it just once, sometimes it needs to go a couple times.
Yeah, we just nailed down the time it's gonna go out, and there's a press release tomorrow. We have a pretty good list of, to get it out to West Bradleboro Master Plan, or the West Bradleboro Association, through the chamber, definitely the media.
So people can put it on their calendars early.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I just have one question about, to go back to our schedule. If somehow, knowing how sometimes calendars change, things don't always fit the schedule, like, can, can we come back like a month from now, and if we need to rearrange, do Just so we're doing that together, and being kept abreast of what.
Sure.
Changes happen.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, well, so these things, just like this, will find their way onto each agenda, just like this.
Yeah.
And so if something slips, we'll have to put it onto another agenda, and that's when we'll talk about.
Yeah.
How we're gonna do that, so.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. We tried to be really realistic about, for instance, the, the, the amount of time between an outline and a draft. Depending on the, you know, the, the depth of the subject, or the, sort of the complexity of the subject, I guess, you know, so.
And the first ones, we've already talked about to some degree anyways.
Right, right. And that's why they're first.
That's right.
Yeah. And you'd notice, notice at the bottom, there's, besides this whole set of work for the consultant and the public, there's gonna be extra public meetings for economic development, housing, and then, I don't know, if the land use one, is that?
It's related to this.
This land use, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's enough else in land use that will come up.
Yeah. So you think we might have a, a public meeting for land use?
Yeah, I mean, well, or at least schedule, have to schedule the extensive time in a regular meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, land use is a pretty core chapter, I mean, it's in the traditional sense of the town plan, it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big chunk of the town plan.
Okay, any other scheduling, calendar-related questions, or? Okay, well then, let's move right on. This didn't take an hour.
Oh, I know, gosh, all right.
So, I noticed that this next section is called the public work session.
I'm gonna put that's a culture for some of these guys to go on.
I don't see anybody here from the Department of Public Works, but.
Hey, Gary?
I got it.
Do you wanna?
Our table got the joke.
Do you wanna make C A and A B and B C?
Sure.
Yep.
Means so we can talk with the arts folks first?
And then let them go home and.
Yeah.
Can we do B in the middle, and A in the middle?
Sure, why don't we flip-flop A and C? How about that?
Okay.
We'll make.
Can we add a G?
Would you like a D?
Or C1?
Give me a D, okay.
Just make it the reverse order.
So we're going to start with Arts and Culture, and the idea with this as a public work session is that everybody that's here gets to talk. And, you know, we had this figured for 15 minutes when we thought the calendar was going to take a lot longer. So we can actually discuss these things for longer than 15 minutes each. So let's just start right in. Now, I don't know, Sue, did you want to kind of go over the, you know, your...
What I was thinking of?
Your thoughts.
My thoughts.
Yeah.
Sure, so the, what you see here is kind of the framework that came out of the Town Plan Advisory Group. So in the box is the principal statement that we're working with at this time, so that's certainly up for discussion. Then there'll be a vision statement, and the best that I can, when you get the outline, you'll get a vision statement. And we do have a vision statement that the Town Arts Committee had sent to us. It's written a little bit, in a different voice than some of the other ones, so I think we'll work with that to make it one voice. And then, then the idea, so the idea, I can't really show it as well on this one as I can on Natural Resources, but what came out of the Town Plan Advisory Group was, it would be really great to have kind of a one-page sheet that whomever doesn't want to read the details can pull out. So you get the principal statement, the vision statement, kind of a recap of what the trends are that we're looking at, and then the goals, objectives, and actions. So you see it on the Natural Resources, because that's the furthest I'm along. So that's kind of a one-page, and then behind it, you're going to get the text of the chapter. You don't see it as well on the draft outline that I gave you for Arts and Culture. But if you think of it like Natural Resources, you see the second part where I list the trends, I'll have a longer discussion of what they are. And so these are some trends that either came from the Arts Committee or that I found either reading different documents, such as the St. Michael's Trends Report, or some things that have been posted on state websites. And so I'll fill out what's going on. And the idea of the trends is to kind of bring it down to what we're dealing with, what are those forces that are acting on the overall chapter topic or conditions in Brattleboro. And then we'll talk about current conditions, so what's actually happening in Brattleboro. And we'll try to just keep inventory-type things out of the plan and put that in an appendix. So in the Arts and Culture Chapter, there's good inventory going on of what exists in town, but we don't really, we want to talk about the bigger issues under current conditions, whether it's positive or negative, the type of things that we're trying to address in town. And the Arts Committee has done a really nice job of framing what the issues are. So, does that give you enough of an orientation to do it?
Well, if we, why don't we take it, sort of take it from the top, and then everybody can ask questions about each section, keeping in mind that this is our first one, so, you know, it'll be a good orientation to the process. So, I mean, the vision statement is like what we have had from the Arts Committee.
Yeah, it'll be like what is from the Arts Committee.
Yeah, so that, I didn't look up that, but you're going to put it in a voice.
Yeah, you'll definitely see it in the graph.
But you're going to try to, like I, at our last meeting, we had the, we had the vision statement. Would you picture it as being something shorter than that, or? I have it here.
Yeah, no, I know, I just can't speculate, because I haven't tried to rewrite it in my voice. But I want to capture, you know, what are the goals that we're trying to achieve, so I want to capture that, but, you know, also the input that they receive.
I think it's reasonable to say the vision statement won't differ too much in length from the one that you see for Natural Resources. So it'll be somewhat shorter than the one that we're...
It'll be a paragraph.
Yeah, be a paragraph roughly the same length.
And then the trends, will that be a sort of a data-driven thing, or?
We actually had this conversation.
We would like it to be. I mean, I think one of the challenges that we have to accept about being a town in Vermont is that much of the data that we would like to collect is collected at the county level at best. And so there's some extrapolation that might go on there, or we will depend on, you know, different sources of collection for the data. But, yeah, I don't want it to be necessarily pie charts and bar graphs, but supported by some numbers where they're available, I think is important. And therefore, some chapters, that's going to be much more, you know, much more, that data's more available and it's going to be much more important. So I think in this instance, we can generate some numbers that are going to be meaningful. And I know that the Arts Committee have started something on Ibrattleboro that goes precisely to this point, that they're trying to collect data now that will be useful for us to capture.
Yeah.
And I think would be useful for the community to have a sense of.
I mean, when we get to Natural Resources, I think you'll see one of the trends that the conservation came up with. I am not actually sure that we do have the data to back it up, but we all know it's true because we know that there were lots of new trail systems opened up in the last couple of years. So that might be one where it's a little bit harder to find the data to back it up.
With regard to economic impact data, there are studies, recent studies for Vermont as a whole, that have been just published in the Burlington Press. But my question to that is, would it be useful to have a Brattleboro-specific economic study, impact study, for the, both for-profit and nonprofit arts? And if so, how is the methodology determined? And what's acceptable, what's not? This seems a very important thing from the point of view of the arts sector, and how this can be made available to you is a bit perplexing. For one thing, just to get the study done, there's going to be, you know, an effort on somebody's part to commission that, as well, then the question of methodology, because it's all over the place with the arts.
Yeah.
And that's probably going to be a trend in itself, that the data collection hasn't happened for the arts sector in the same way that it has for Natural Resources and a lot of the other sectors.
Right.
And that's something that we would, it's something we're working on, but definitely a trend that we would probably want to see represented as well, because we know that that's a struggle, the data's just not there.
I know it's going to sound glib, and it's not meant to sound glib, but one of the trends then that is worth observing is that, you know, measuring the economic contribution that the arts makes is a trend that's going on. So if you were to look at the last town plan in that last period, there's plenty of recognition of the significance of the arts and why it's important to have, and why it's prominent, and why Brattleboro was, you know, a convivial or accommodating community for artistic activity. All those kinds of statements in the last town plan, but there wasn't a discussion even of the economic contribution that the arts could make or was making. So just that, just that mature, I mean, I'm assuming that we want to think of it as a maturing thing, just so that the conversation is matured to the point where the arts community themselves wants to measure the economic contribution, and planners and economic development workers and other people are actually interested and recognize that there is a significant contribution coming from the arts community in itself is a significant trend, I would say, in the last 10 years. So that would work as a trend, and it's not particularly numerical in the way you'd frame it. But then, and I agree about, you know, I've been reading about the differing methodologies and those different kinds of approaches, and they're never without controversy or never without conflict. But, you know, I think we can resolve those.
Right, and if there was some recommendation maybe from you, that would be helpful to us, because, for instance, the O5 report contained direct and indirect, and when that then was discussed later with people, it was, the value of the report was not as great because the idea of it being indirect and direct impact was, there was skepticism for that.
Right, yeah.
So if we all started from the same, you know, basic framework, I think it would be easier.
Right.
So are we saying that we want to make either an objective or an action, to be that, you know, within a year or two years, we want a study that defines, based on some of methodology we've reviewed on a later date, what the economic impact of the arts is, are?
Yeah, I mean, I thought, yeah, I think that came out of your material, yeah. Definitely, yeah, I mean, I didn't, just because the objectives and actions aren't listed here, I'm not ignoring what you've submitted.
Right.
Just didn't get time to get to everything.
Yes, yeah.
But I, like Rod's point about using the trend as measuring the economic impact, that that is a trend, because I've actually struggled with all the different reports that, to my trend number one, that the arts have a substantial impact on the Vermont economy. I mean, there's so many reports and they all have critics, so I think maybe turning it around and using that as the trend, and then just going through it.
This Burlington is a good idea.
Right.
Sorry. The Burlington Report lists the arts as the fifth-largest industry in Vermont, and we're still debating whether or not there's an economic impact from it. It's astounding.
Well, it couldn't be as big as the maple syrup industry, could it?
It is, believe it or not.
But is anybody really debating that, or is it just a matter of quantifying it?
But that's, I think that's the piece, is just convincing people that it's not all anecdote-based, that it's not all, that was a great gallery opening and people were there, but that there are actual numbers attached to it, that when we look around town, we can identify, okay, this is the contribution to our fiscal health, and fiscal health and the arts, we're still not at the point where those are, they work hand in hand. So I think the quantifying part is a huge piece of it. The anecdote-based, we have that down.
Yeah, and it's built...
Gallery work was great, but not, this is what it did for the town.
Right, right. And, you know, to be fair to the art sector, you know, not just here, but overall, there's been, you know, huge amounts of economic analysis done for, for instance, our manufacturing jobs, so that, you know, people can spit out very confidently that for every manufacturing job, it contributes to some fraction of service sector jobs. Or to express it in a slightly different way, every manufacturing job is like having 1.7 service jobs because of the pay and benefits that, on average, are better for a manufacturing job versus a service job. So, you know, there's endless amounts of research that goes on, so you can talk about multiplier effects and all those kinds of things associated with saving or creating a manufacturing job. We don't have that level of certainty with arts jobs, but I would say that in terms of economic development strategy, the recognition of the creative economy and the arts being associated or connected to that in some way means that there's much more recognition of the economic importance of a vibrant arts community as an economic development strategy now, rather than perhaps 30 or 40 years ago, thinking that a vibrant economy was able to sustain meaningful arts community.
Right.
Right? So...
Yeah, it was like the reverse.
Yeah, and I don't want to overplay the reverse either. I mean, I know, I'm wearing Richard Flora, I mean, I'm wearing black on purpose tonight, but, you know, there's, so, Kate's got the uniform, too. So, but there's this, you know, the sort of cynical version is, well, now that all the manufacturing jobs are gone, what have you got left? So, and I don't want to fall into that trap either, but I think that, you know, there's some caution that you need to exercise there with, wow, how big can it be as a sector, and what can it do, and what can we expect of it? Because I think that the worst-case scenario is that we develop very optimistic scenarios for the contribution that the arts community is going to make to economic vitality in the near future, and it somehow doesn't achieve, and everyone's going to turn and go, oh, that was a waste of time, which is a little bit like the O5 report and the skepticism, it's like, people couldn't quite see it, so therefore the whole idea was somehow sort of dismissed rather than taken for what it was with, you know, reasonably at the time, which is, that it was a good effort, and it meant something.
Yeah, so, and that's exactly what I'm trying to get at with, if there was a framework for the methodology, that, so maybe this is something that actually comes out of the economic development chapter, not so much, some in the arts chapter, but more from the perspective of the economic development.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the work that I'm doing in this room and other rooms at the same time now, to do with economic development across the county, across the region, is pointing to the fact that many people have identified the arts as a key asset that this region can develop. I think the numbers, again, however they're put together, suggest that it's very, it's growing pretty fast, but it's very small. And it's not going to replace, you know, manufacturing or warehousing and transportation anytime soon, but that doesn't mean to say that it's not important, because it's a huge opportunity, and it is growing strongly, and so it's something that we would want to foster. But that's where you get the goals and objectives in the economic development chapter, I think.
Right, then with, to that, who's defining, and where's the definition of the arts as a sector or the creative industries? And what's the overlap, and what's the, what are the definitions there?
Now...
That's a good question.
Let's back up just a little bit.
Right.
I think what Jim suggested about having that kind of definition be part of a goal, you know, and action, makes sense, because we're certainly not going to solve that problem, those problems before, you know, in the town plan, to start with. And we are talking about trends right now, right?
Yeah.
That's what we're...
Yeah.
So I think, could we say that the trend of economic impact is beginning to be measured? Is that a, I mean, that's...
Sure.
We can agree on that, and we can...
We'd like it to be measured more.
Right.
Yeah, basically.
But as a trend, though, I'm saying, I think Rod suggested that that be in there as a trend, and I think if we can include that in as a trend, that's something that we can all...
Right.
That people can agree on, right?
Right.
And I think it could be a really nice balanced statement of that it's beginning to be realized, and then on the other side, but that there's not an across-the-board rubric to do it.
Right.
And that will set up nicely the next piece.
And so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, I mean, in the outline, so, I mean, I would change that first trend to reflect what we're talking about, but if you flip it over and we talk about the needs for the arts community, I mean, D is to better understand.
Right, right.
So, you know, that, and then it'll show up in the goals or...
Right, and then just, I think Kate brings up a really important point, it's probably not the right moment in this meeting, or even necessarily this meeting, to talk about it, but you do actually raise, I mean, it's a point of interest, you know, the geeky end of economic development and planning, which I've been following a little bit. It's an important question, and I don't want to think, let you think that, you know, we're just moving over it. I think we'd, I'd like to come back to it, because I think...
Great, great.
There's other stuff from the kind of more mainstream kind of data collection that, for instance, shows that professional, in the national system of identifying occupational in the national system of identifying occupational categories, professional services, which includes things like scientists and technicians, is the fastest-growing salary to employment sector in the state. There's parts of that that is the creative economy, and there's parts of it that are clearly not. So somebody who's doing septic tank design is in there, somebody who's doing web design is also in there. So there could be a crossover, and I don't want to think about that too much. But I'd just say that there's something to be kind of better understood in there. And the people that we're working with at the regional level are interested in that connection as well.
Great.
So it's a worthy goal and objective to try to come up with, as you said, kind of rubric for that, you know.
Yeah.
And a, and a big one.
Right.
And I, I think it's big because in many ways, people have been coming to this area for the arts for a long time, which isn't necessarily true in other areas of the state or even of the country. I mean, some people are just new on that bandwagon, so to speak, you know. People redeveloping their riverfront so that there can be cultural things, when we've had things like the Marlboro Music Festival, the Brattleboro Music Center for many, many years, and, and craftspeople came here in the 60s and 70s and have been kind of backwoods kind of people, and Putney Craft Store has been going on for 25, 30 years or more. So that kind of stuff's been here for a long time, kind of embedded in, and now it's just, so we've had a long accounting, I guess, of people really coming here for arts, because it's a creative place. And, and like you said, it does include other things besides arts per se, the creative endeavors of many kinds. And I think we need to acknowledge the fact that our sense of place that people look for is really something that feeds into all that.
So as far as the trends go here, I think a question I have at least is, is how, how much do we need generally to quantify those kinds of things, you know? Or footnote those kinds of things or whatever, you know? And this is just sort of a generic question for me in, in the trends, you know?
Do you mean how many, how many trends should there be?
Or how.
Differenting a topic?
How numeric?
But when it says, let's say, there has been an increase in the number of artists in Vermont, you know, is that something where, you know, somebody knows that and.
St. Mike's Research Center?
Yeah, well, like that, yeah, yeah. I mean, I would just hate to have somebody pick this up and say, well, who says, you know?
Right, no, 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 it'll definitely be footnoted and, you know, sourced and.
Which was good, yeah, and that sort of was getting back to the point, that why I was responding so seriously to Kate. Because there, there are serious questions in there and they need to be addressed.
So I, I guess that's, that was my question, is that kind of stuff, when we talk about trends in each of the, in each of the chapters, it'll be factual stuff that people can look at and go, oh, yeah, I didn't know that.
Right.
Yeah, but then there's the example of the trails.
Right, right, yeah, which is okay, you know, I just don't want to see us underreaching or overreaching on this stuff, you know?
Yes.
Like under-explaining and under, under verifying.
Or over-reporting the importance of something.
Or, or overdoing it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I'm very sensitive to that and it's, I like the idea of the trends, but it is causing me some consternation.
Yeah.
Actually, because you can, you know, you can always say, well, what if this, what if that, so.
And with regard to arts funding is in decline exactly, so there are, there are two tracks going on there. Arts funding is in decline overall and long-term. At the same time, it's exacerbated by the recession.
Right.
So how much, how little, you know, how much is it actually in decline relative?
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to try to figure that out.
Yeah, I was just, actually, I had a question for you on that. So when we, I mean, it seems like a true statement.
Yeah.
But if you broke it out, I can imagine it would be pretty easy to measure the reduction in public funding for the arts. But as, I was looking at it before and thinking, well, what about philanthropic, you know, try, you know, private foundation giving and those kinds of things? I don't have any sense of you on a way you would go to get that data, do you have a sense of where you would go?
Yeah, the, but what I've seen with it is it just ranges.
Yeah.
It's almost indecipherable.
Oh, oh, okay.
I guess it goes back to the original question of how do you measure the, the arts? It's just, it, it is a trend that people are actually trying to do it in a coherent way right now.
Yeah, I've had, this one came from looking at Alex, what's his name?
I want to see it clear, but it's the wrong Alex.
Yeah, it's the wrong, from Vermont Arts Council.
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, looking at his material, and, and I'm trying to go back and recreate from their reports. So basically, the funding that, it, it involves the state funding. So it's, you get funding from NEA, that's pretty much a certain amount of what the state is matching. So it actually is, the state has pretty much been level funding, and therefore you get a certain contribution from the federal government. But because of inflation, it's actually, it's not keeping up with inflation, so.
Even though inflation's too low, okay, all right.
Foundation funding has been hit hard.
Right.
As well, and individual giving is, is also hit, but I, my point is, you know, how much of it is dependent on this current recession? Because the arts are hit first and recover last, and how much of it is just an overall trend?
You're, you're going to have to stick with public funding, there's just no.
There's no central source of.
You could, someone can make a donation to, to Marlboro College for a million dollars, it's pegged for the arts, but that's not going to get out to the general public that the arts were supported. And I should say officially, we encourage people to do that. That's not going to be something that we can measure.
Right.
So it, it's going to have to stick with public funding or publicly reported funding.
Publicly reported funding, okay, yeah, because there are, I thought, in other areas of philanthropy and foundation activity, there are kind of clearinghouses that, that publish information after the fact of not which foundation gave money, gave money to who, but in general, you know, what, because it's thought of as an industry, what's happening in the industry. So I don't know.
Right.
In the arts community, if there's something that does that.
That's not going to have a compendium of, of how much money did the, through the arts gallery get.
Right, right.
In 2010, so that, it's going to, it will drive you less crazy if you stick with public.
Well, would the IRS have, even if it didn't have individual names, would the IRS have data on people or organizations that list themselves? For instance, you know, galleries and things like that that collect, that basically sell? Would the IRS have data that's, that tells us, you know, individ, even if they, if they didn't give us the names, but.
Right, compiled.
Said, you know, seven, in, in that zip code, 75 people list themselves as artists and their gross take, not their net, but their gross, you know, top line was, you know, X. Is that kind of data available from the IRS?
I could, I could find out, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, there's got to, there's got to be more, taking only public data probably only gives us like 20% of the story.
Right.
Yeah, I'm worried about that.
14% of the story.
I had.
So that make you just multiply that by, you know.
Well, I was, I was interested in, like, we have a lot of nonprofit art cultural organizations in Brattleboro, and I was actually interested in their health. And I had kind of, I started to put together a little online survey, and it's kind of one of the questions, you know, like, what about your, you know, are you experiencing increase, decrease, you know, what are you seeing? You know, maybe it is worth getting it out and, you know, it's not a scientific survey, but can report on what the local organizations are saying.
And that would be useful.
That's part of why we're trying to compile our resource list, is so we can do things like that. But right now, we don't have a list to put a send, and then.
Maybe, I mean, it's worth pursuing it.
Can I just see if we can get on, in a little framework here, it's five after seven. We have three of these to do. We have one group of people that's here to speak to one of them.
We're here to speak to all three. No, we're not, sorry.
And.
This is the fullest.
We will be going until 8:30 tonight. So I, I would say, and I don't know if Sue or Rod, if you have a sense of, I mean, how much time we should be figuring on devoting to natural and scenic resources and agriculture.
Right, I think, I think agriculture, in terms of the length of the outline, is by far the shortest, which is not to say anything other than I think we're pretty comfortable with that as a framework, and we think we can fill that, that in pretty adequately. I think that natural resources is at least as rich for asking questions as the arts and cultural resources are. We don't, people have anyone present to represent the.
Right.
It's most flushed out of the papers, I think, of us too.
But it's also the most advanced, so.
Yeah. More comments.
What if we, I mean, go till, till 7:30 on the arts and then we'll.
Yeah, I would maybe make, maybe make it even a little 7:20.
Yeah, I'd say less, we've already been a half hour almost.
Well, I think, I mean, I think we can move it along in that not debating the ins and outs of the trends. I mean, you're going to ask me a question, how do I intend to fill it, but what am I missing, like, what am I missing, or am I way off?
Right.
On the trends, Judy.
So I'm kind of, I don't know, the trends section here is, I don't know, some things made me uncomfortable about it. And as best as I could explain it, it's that all four of those trends have to do with the economy and that aspect of the art sector. But there's a whole nother thing about the arts, or plenty of other things about the arts. So I don't know if this is such a balanced trend, like the quality of life issues, the availability of the arts, the, what you see, what you experience in the town, all, all this other stuff, it's, it just seems like it's unbalanced here.
I agree, actually, I think that, I was going to actually ask you as a group, not necessarily thinking that you had the answer, but assuming that we do think it's a vital part of the community, and I think we do, then, again, it's going to be sort of database, but I mean, I'm interested in things such as participation, like how, you know, for, so for instance, if you thought, if you were able to say that arts programming in the schools is stronger now than it was 10 years ago, or that it benefits from an inner, a better interaction between the private and public schools and artists in the community? Or there are more, you know, after-school and weekend opportunities for children to participate in art? Or just that there's more art programming, so, not just for children? So that if you're an adult or a citizen or a resident in town, that you would have a more culturally rich life here now, because there are more things to choose from than you'd say 10 years ago? Or, or is it shrinking, and if it's shrinking, why, or is it becoming more focused or less focused? Or, I mean, it doesn't have to be necessarily a good trend or a bad trend, it could just be a trend. But I would, I'm interested to know about, I guess the word I would use is participation. Both as people making it and people consuming it.
Yeah, well, we could combine one and two and say there's been an increase in the number of artists and impact, and make that, you don't have to leave, lose anything, but just round it out a little more in the trend section.
Yeah, I think the, I think that's a good point, the trends, to me, as you said, seem to be more economic-based. And definitely in the last 10 years, we've had, I mean, the literary festival didn't exist 10, more than 10 years ago, or since mid 90s, let's say anyways, youth theater, the circus school, all these things are really new. So the, the kind, different kinds of, and arts in general, has been increasing here. And I'd say in the, in the last 10 years, more so than in the previous 10 years. And do we have to substantiate that? I don't know, maybe, but.
Well, that gets, that gets to Gary's question and the, the trails example.
It's always great if you can, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't just say we can't say it.
But it's in the, in the appendix and the stuff we had last time, I mean, if you look at the dates.
Yeah, I mean, I can pull it, I can say, yeah.
I'm just concerned if you make an assertion about a trend, that there be something.
To back it up.
You know, it isn't just somebody's opinion, you know? I mean, and we all might agree on the same thing, but we may not know why we agree, you know? And we have to think about the person who hasn't been doing this, picking it up and saying, hmm, you know?
Yeah, and they're.
If you make an assertion about quality of life and the arts, I think it's good to have something to back that up. And I don't know how data-driven that is or how whatever it is, maybe it is just, there's this many more programs or we think that, you know, this many more people are involved with our programs or whatever it is, you know?
It shows up in the appendix inventories.
Sure.
When you, when you start reading through that, you can really see that.
And I'm not trying to get to particular things like this, just.
Just in general.
Just sort of the general idea with trends.
But I, your points we'll take, and Judy, I think that's a good observation.
Yeah, we need to look at.
So these trends, these first trends, these are supposed to be statewide or bigger picture trends?
No, they're statewide, I can't remember the increase of artists, yeah, they're statewide.
Statewide, and then conditions are, are more local?
I think in terms of the structure of the, I'm sorry.
Sorry, the trends are what I can find.
Yeah.
So it, it doesn't necessarily have to be state, you know, when it's statewide, I'll point out that it's a state trend.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, no, if we've got local information, it'll be that.
One of the, right, and then one of the purposes of the plan, in terms of the chapter structure that we've set out to do, I'm not sure if we're going to actually achieve this personal, personal, this departmental goal, which is identify what the state trends or even the national trends are, and then look at Wyndham, the Wyndham region, and then even Brattleboro in reference to that. So to take it right out of your field, for instance, if homeless is growing, homelessness is growing dramatically as a problem in Brattleboro, far faster than the state trend, then we know we've got some kind of a problem there. Or if homelessness is a pretty significant trend statewide, but Brattleboro's is much smaller than that, then we can also assume that for whatever reason, we're doing fairly well with that, or it's not as big an, of an issue for us as it is for perhaps some other community. So it was a easy kind of dashboard-style comparison, oh, we've got more than the national average of geniuses, that's good. Ooh, or no, we've got more than the national average of homeless people, that's bad. You know, so then, when it comes to policies or, or objectives, what are we going to do about it? With something like the arts chapter topic, it's not, it's not quite as effective as a, as a, as a, as a plan for a chapter. But I still think, you know, if somehow we could come to the conclusion that Wyndham, the Wyndham region and Brattleboro itself were leading the state in terms of support for the arts community, then we'd want to say that.
Right, and, and I think looking at it in this way is, is a little bit misleading, just because, I agree with Judy that the trends look starkly economic, but even more so just because the vision statement's not on the piece of paper. And the vision statement is not as rooted as, at all in economics, it's sort of a shout out to it. So I think that's, that just.
It's sort of missing there.
I think in looking at this, it just makes the trends look even that much more.
Right.
And quite frankly, I, I guess I have selective reading. In number one, I just kept, in my head, as I read it, just kept leaving off the word economy.
Right.
And, and it makes it as much as, as much of a complete statement.
Right.
One thing I want to add in though, is hidden in, within the question of participation is a trend to acknowledge greater accessibility to the arts for.
Right.
So far, unrepresented groups. So I think not only would I say that there is, you know, definitely a trend to increase availability of the arts, there's also a trend to address accessibility for economically disadvantaged, physically disadvantaged, socially disadvantaged, age in, in all manner.
Okay, great.
Can I move us forward a bit in that?
Yes, please.
To the goals to be achieved, that, that was definitely an opportunity for us to, again, in writing it out. If there's a way that we can specifically give a shout out to youth, that's something that's very much been at the forefront of our meetings.
Yeah.
And maybe it's under accessibility, although as Kate just said, there's a lot of different areas there. But as I look at this, I'm trying to find places in this document where we can be very specific and say, it is. can be very specific and say, it is, and I would think it is, goals to be achieved is more youth involvement, interaction.
You have, on this thing from the last meeting, it is there as action item three. I hope that's as in-depth as you want. It says, "Plan with local educators to integrate youth into town arts opportunities," and maybe that needs to be a little bit more. But just as a goal, then there can be action steps, more action, or whatever, however the format goes, more steps under that.
Yep, that's great.
Okay, so, so, accessibility arts, especially youth.
Yep.
And then, Sue, on the objectives to be reached and actions to be taken, those are gonna be derived from what we've done before.
Their work, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And that trends, that's just a typo, right?
Duplication.
Yes.
Duplication of above, okay.
And then, current conditions. We expect that the work that the Arts Committee is doing right now is gonna help us answer 1A, specifically with reference to Brattleboro, and we can get...
Yeah, and I think culture count has some of that information.
Yeah.
Say that again, I couldn't hear.
Culture count, it's a New England...
New England, right.
Right.
So, I can get, I can look up the number of nonprofits.
And then, it's probably not the appropriate place to have a, you know, an intellectual discussion about the economic contribution of the arts, but some...
You mean, right here, right now?
I get the feeling, I get the feeling that right here, right now is not good.
Two and a half minutes, I think we can knock it out.
Well, no, I mean, the point there is that we're not necessarily gonna be able to quantify it to Brattleboro. I mean, it's to get to the, you know, the current conditions can either be the positive things going on, or what are our needs, and so that'll...
And then, two, I think is pretty self-explanatory and straightforward. And I think, to some extent, it might be my own blind, you know, blind spots, but I think that the fact that, as a community, we have our own museum, and it is a, you know, huge institutional plus that, you know, I don't think you could reasonably assume, given the size of the community, that we should necessarily have one. But we, we back to...
And that's one where, I think you can add up, not to go crazy on that, on B, but we would definitely recommend putting, adding the library and the Historical Society to that, too.
Yep.
This is where we're really just trying to expand.
The definition of what it is there.
What the arts are.
Right, exactly.
So, the library and the Historical Society are pretty integral parts to that.
Right.
That's the organ, I don't see, that's in the inventory of museums, but...
That's a private.
But it's private.
Oh, it's private.
Yeah, I was just going specifically on what...
Town, town things.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, current town sport, okay.
Right. And then, if you turn over the page...
Should there be a listing there for schools? Under town support, that for schools, I mean, they're a public institution, and they support the arts in many ways, and can be encouraged more, so, in the future.
And then, D looks great. I mean, that's, that's great.
Yeah.
It's thorough.
We want those.
Okay, good.
It was well-stated at the last meeting.
Yeah, it was, very well.
It was well-received as well.
Yeah, thank you. It was, it was very effective. And then, three?
And three is, I mean, that's kind of the, what came out of the charade.
Yeah.
Also, previous efforts. I mean, it seemed to be recurring themes and everything that I could get my hands on.
Right. And then, accessibility turns up there again, so, yeah. I mean, I think we've, we've talked about that already.
It seems very thorough.
Okay.
And we're right on time.
Are there, are there other, anything else that...
Well, I guess I would just ask, I mean, I think what you said, Judy, was really important, and I agree with you totally. I wonder, you know, if the three of you, or anybody else, has any thoughts about what the trends might be, you know, that would be something good to forward to Sue, you know, and...
You just don't want trends, you want something that we can give a footnote, that's footnotable, which is kind of challenging.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I mean, all I'm saying is, I don't want somebody to pick this up and say, this is his opinion.
I get it, I definitely get it. It's just a hard thing to do.
And just maybe while you're thinking about it, and thinking what the trends might be, you sort of, you know, go back and forth with, okay, why should somebody think this is true, you know? Doesn't make it not true, but, you know, if we can't touch and feel a little bit, it's hard to have people imagine it, or...
Let's have everybody think about it.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road, and I don't mean to sound kind of wishy-washy about it, but, I mean, we need to see if that section of the plan works, because I don't, you know, we don't want something that's gonna poke holes in the plan, you know? If it's not working, you know, the whole section in each chapter can come out, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
And for us, if it's working for another section, and ours is kind of forced into that model, it's just gonna make this look even more wishy-washy, just because we wouldn't then fit into that, so...
Yeah, I mean, some chapters, I think it works easier than others, so maybe it doesn't, you know, maybe...
And it was an idea at the beginning to try and organize the information. It wasn't sort of meant to be a straightjacket for the subject areas.
Right.
And at the point where it becomes ineffectual, because we're shoving stuff in that doesn't really wanna go in there, then, yeah, I think we'll revisit this chapter structure thing.
But I think it's really important, if, you know, if we're talking about Brattleboro as an arts community, and we are making the assertion that it is an arts community, and we say that that's one of the trends, then we should have something to offer. And I'm sure you do, I'm sure we all do, you know?
Yeah, I don't think this would be impossible.
About why that makes sense, you know?
I don't think this would be impossible to find. I mean, I would say, you know, you could call a New England youth theater and say, okay, how many people were involved in 2000, how many people were involved in 2010?
Right.
Whoops, five less. Oh, okay. You know, but that's still okay. If you look at it as a percentage of the population, it might be in, you know, 5% increase, so that's okay. You know, there's just, there's, and we can help you out with that. I mean, it's, you know, I had this sneaking suspicion, I can't think of some obscure sport that's more obscure now than it was 10 years ago. But there are trends in those kinds of things as well, go up and down. I would say that activity, you know, not just children, but members of the community being able to participate in artistic activity is an important thing in and of itself.
I just wanna be a little, it feels like, this is what I tell my students all the time, is that their program, the success of their program is not determined by the number of people that show up.
No.
And I just wanna be a little careful in going too far in that route, and what we've been talking about, and what Judy was saying earlier, is, okay, so we are offering this program, and attendance is down, but what is the impact of just offering this program?
Yes.
What does it provide to the community? And obviously, that's gonna be harder to quantify, but how do you, how do we get at that? I just, I get a little nervous if we go too far with participation.
Yes.
But I also agree that in five years, when you're sitting down to do this again, and we're looking back at the trends, we need to be able to update them in a way that reflects back, that correlates in a way that makes sense.
Right.
Are you hopeful to get this trend information by this coming Friday?
No, no, I mean, if you, if you have...
Yes.
No, it's, I mean, no, it's something, it's not something I'm necessarily expecting that you get those answers, but if you come up with something that you think, you know, is worth looking into, if you can get that to me by Friday, that would be great. But if it's not...
Right.
It's a work in progress, you know?
That's great.
Yeah.
Maybe, just somewhat, the nature of arts, it's hard to quantify things when you're assessing them. It's just in there, it's not like math.
We'll pull back the curtain a little bit.
Right.
These are kind of our trade secrets, but we talked about it at a big retreat that we had, just the phrase "art good," that was what motivated us to move forward, that art is good and positive, and that art is also a good, a commodity. And the latter, we can quantify. It's, what we're struggling with is how do we put forth the "art is good" piece in a way that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree. And I don't think, I don't know how easy it is gonna be for us to convey that. I think it's really important that the town plan does convey that. And like I said, even if it turned out that 10 less kids are involved in the New England Youth Theater now than they were 10 years ago, that doesn't, that's not, that doesn't make a trend. I mean, what I'd say is that, you know, taking it at a different level, the fact that it's still here and a vibrant organization against, you know, you know, a background of real struggle for a whole lots of other community organizations is fabulous. And so, yeah, and I hear what you're saying. It's not that 15 is a bigger number than 10, therefore 15 is better, I don't, you know?
That we have gallery walk, when so many other gallery walks in other communities are...
The fold, right.
Yeah, the sustainability of these organizations, that they've come, maybe 10 years ago, but that they're still here, and that they're thriving. And I don't know how you can measure this. Another piece of that is, many of these different groups had people who, again, whether they, I can't say whether they picked here because Brattleboro was what it was, but like the circus people, they came and started their school here. I mean, I don't know, why did they pick here, or was somebody connected to somebody? But then that brings people to buy real estate, to shop in the stores. I mean, that impacts the greater economy in a way that isn't exactly by the number of tickets that get sold to those programs or those arts.
We would be really glad to talk about this for a lot longer.
I'm sure you would.
She probably would like us to leave now.
Unless you wanna talk about natural resources.
You can stay.
Agriculture's next.
Oh, I'm sorry, agriculture's next, come on. You eat down here.
Well, thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you.
And for all of your work and your work in the future.
We appreciate the forum.
Yeah, hey, thanks a lot for coming.
I could be yours.
Oh, and so, if you get those numbers to us by Friday, that'd be great.
Yeah, right. I'll smoke it out.
Sue, do we wanna just kick off from the top again?
We want to kick off from the top with agriculture, right?
Mm-hmm.
Same idea.
Working landscape.
Okay, Sue, what's the big idea here?
Guess the big idea is that we're not proposing anything groundbreaking in this chapter. I mean, I think it's to continue...
Very good, I like it.
But you didn't realize how witty you were.
Yeah.
That's a new kind of agriculture, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a low-impact.
Yeah, right, like arts.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's to, you know, so that we do have an active farming community, that we, you know, that there's a lot of, I mean, you don't see it here, but a lot of it is actually, has some form of conservation, whether it's a, in current, well, not current use, I'm not necessarily considered that conservation, but there's some sort of protection on it, development rate, or outright conserved. And just kind of explain our local food system, that it's grown, and it's an important part. Some might disagree, but I think we're not, we're not talking about a huge... It's important on two levels, you know, agriculture's important on two levels. It's kind of the quality of life aspect.
You can say working landscape, I was just...
Really stock, you just can't do it anymore.
Yeah, no, I can't do it, yeah.
I mean, one way to summarize it is, I think it's an important heritage issue for the community. It's central to the, its sense of place, so it is a heritage item. It's also an economic activity that can be measured in that way. And when it's measured as an economic activity, it's somewhat smaller, perhaps, than the significance of it as a heritage factor.
Yes, thank you.
That's that. Took me a long time, I just don't know why, to use the word heritage, but, yeah.
And that's what you're capturing in the vision statement, right?
Mm-hmm.
Intriguing contributions to Brattleboro's economy, environment, community, character, health, history, culture, and quality of life, those are all.
Right. And I think the heritage factor continues to grow in some important ways, which is also an interesting reflection on where human beings are at, in terms of their, you know, behaviors and connections with food production. So, as it becomes more difficult to see around you every day, it becomes, in some ways, more deeply valued in a different kind of a way. Right? So, if we were, you know, it's okay. So, I think there's, part of that is going on. I think also that there's been some really significant developments in attitudes towards diet, means of food production, and levels of activity associated with it, so people are actually much more interested in the links between physical activity, food production, and the kind of food that you eat.
So, this isn't really that different from the arts?
It has about the same economic contribution, actually.
Is there some measurement about what agricultural contribution is to the economy?
Yes. Yeah, that's pretty well-established, and it's small.
Less than 10%?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, significantly less than 10%.
Is there some organization, like the Arts Commission, that sort of speaks to...
There is a town agricultural commission, and I do want to get them together to comment.
I mean, there are lots of statewide organizations.
Yes.
Could people speak louder? I'm just having trouble hearing everybody. Maybe it's 'cause the heat's running, but people seem to be talking very quietly and kind of mumbling, so...
I'm curious if there's ever been any desire, I don't see anything listed here. Has anybody ever talked about any desire about exporting, not to other countries, but just, this basically talks about, this is really local, this particular section, it feels like, we've got this agricultural thing, it's important for our local community. The, it only talks about food staying local, and talks about local people. But there is some agricultural things that go on here that bring money into the town when we ship product, whether it's the yogurt factory, or people come here to visit cheese factories and things like that. I don't know, I'm wondering if there's somebody around here that represents this group that sees value in looking to do more exporting of, or bringing money in one way or another, by either exporting product, or increasing tourism, or, you know, through education of, you know, the trends of people wanting to eat more healthy isn't just a local trend, it's a national trend.
Right, well, global even, yeah.
Yeah, so, it feels like we have something here to export.
Yep, we do, and...
But I can't speak for this...
Right. At the county level, I'm aware of a number of, and it's anecdotal, and that's part of the problem. So, when you start getting into this data, it gets to be pretty complicated. We know the number of registered dairy farms in Brattleboro. Some of the biggest dairy herds in Wyndham County are in the town of Brattleboro. So, that first kind of, and Danny, you can help me out here when we feel the urge. So, you know, if you did a quick scan and asked people if they thought, you know, a sort of a quiz in the street, where would the biggest dairy farm in Wyndham County be, they probably wouldn't name Brattleboro as the place. But it turns out that Brattleboro's got fairly big, you know, a couple of, a couple of pretty good farms involved in the dairy sector. With the Grafton Cheese Factory, which has a store, a retail facility attached to it, which is very successful, and is growing, and is doing really well. I know... and is, is growing and is doing really well. I'm not actually aware of Brattleboro-based producers, you know, with a sort of a branded product that is recognized outside of Brattleboro, going to sort of destination markets. I am aware of Wyndham regional stuff. And I know that across Wyndham County, there are a number of small producers who are, you know, totally focused on providing farm product to restaurants and so forth. You know, so they're, it's kind of a market, but it's, it's not a market you can enter, right? They've got a relationship with, with a set number of restaurants in New York City, and they're very successful, and they're doing really well.
There are local restaurants here.
And, and some local restaurants, yeah. Right. So, so we know that. A lot of it's anecdotal, some of it is sort of factual. Real, the material that we can access easily suggests that farm size is going down, the number of farms is going up. We've looked at income data for people who are identified as farmers and the vast majority earn, have a full-time job off the farm. So we know that there's some trends going on in agriculture within Wyndham County and that are also true of Brattleboro, which suggests, at least to us, that hobby farming is increasing as a category of activity rather than larger-scale production. Remembering that even large by Vermont standards is not, all of a sudden not very large as soon as you leave. So, within that context, we think that it's good discussion to have with the ag advisory committee and with others, that, you know, what can we do to maintain or foster the, the commitment to agriculture? You know, and how plausible is it? Do we want, for instance, do we want to reverse this trend? Do we want to try and stop the trend of hobby farming to some extent? Because what it's doing is fragmenting regular farms. I don't, you know, that's a good policy question to ask.
I would call it less hobby farming and more smaller-scale diversified farming, which is the trend, because the larger farms are being broken up or aren't as sustainable. And it's that shift away from larger-scale dairy farms to smaller-scale diversified farms. So that's kind of like what that data is.
Why is that happening? Why is it?
Because it's really expensive, you know, to farm, taxes, land values, all of that stuff.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Taxes, land values, it's expensive to farm. But, you know, what's going on in the dairy industry, the, the crisis in the dairy industry in terms of pricing, and that's, you know, government and huge private processors. I mean, it's a very complex issue. But a lot of it, yeah, has to do with, with money.
One, one thing, I think, I think the term hobby farming is a little deceptive, because a lot of gardening is going up radically, and people are feeding, feeding themselves from it. So it's sort of hobbyish, but they're also eat, they're eating, you know, from what it is. I mean, it's even, urban gardening is going up radically, rooftops.
Right.
I was gonna say, the, from, I read some stuff talking about how, how this, this trend of, of more farms but smaller is a, is a national trend. It's less in like a lot of the high, the high plains states, but, but on the west coast and the east coast and in south and Great Lakes region. And I, I think one problem with measuring farming just in economic terms as a value too, is just that as energy costs go up and economic changes kind of proceed in whichever way they may, they may go, that you can also eat, you know, from it. And so, so.
It has that side, it has that side benefit. That's right, you can eat it.
Questions like just, okay, so are we going to work on like, so what are the goals and objectives for this section?
There's nothing here.
And I, I know. And so, I, yeah, see the same basic framework when you talk about arts and you talk about agriculture, because they're essentially the same things. It's like agri, agri tourism, you know, cultural tourism, the economic development piece, the multiplier effect pieces. It's kind of similar to like manufacturing or.
Yep.
Artistic endeavors. So I just started listing some of those goals.
Oh, great.
What are they? Economic development, you know, enhancing access to and appreciation of Brattleboro's farming community. That I kind of pulled from natural resources. So just kind of cobbling that stuff together to fill out the ag section. And I feel like it can, it really is sort of like the, the meeting ground of those two other realms of natural resources and the arts in ag. So, I don't know, it's a way to think about it and start.
Right.
Filling this out and putting together goals and objectives.
Okay.
Will you pass those along to me? Do you have them written down, or?
Oh, I mean, I just, yeah.
Just jot it here? That's great. Just, you know, if it's decipherable, just leave it at the end of the meeting, if you want. We can copy it and then send it back to you.
And then, you know, sort of like some of the trends that I sent you from the Ag Census that are incorporated here, like the difference over time from 2002 to 2007, do you want more of that? Because I have, you know, like if you want the Ag Census, it's like hundreds of pages.
Yes, and I've tried.
I have a hard copy that you can.
Do you ever, I've tried to like pull down different parts of it and.
And there's new stuff coming out. So like, you know, the business environment for farming, like under three C, sort of the list of some of the different networks and organizations, like Farm to Plate.
Yep, yep. I have, I have a lot of those.
Statewide, yeah. So, you know, next week they're releasing their initial report based on the, you know, public outreach they did across the state and had multiple working sessions and all of that stuff.
Okay.
You know, sort of, I think, thinking about some of those larger structural things that are happening at the state level, on down, looking at food systems, so regional food system Vermont and sort of outlying parts of New Hampshire, New York State, whatever. And then also the local food system, Wyndham County, Brattleboro specifically. Well, I think it's, some of the stuff is broader than Brattleboro, you know, you're looking county-wide or.
Right. Yeah, I think you do have to look.
Wide, yeah. Yeah. But definitely making those connections and sort of tying into some of, I mean, that's a, it's a definite trend, you know, kind of local food awareness, not just the, the awareness of local food, but the awareness of the necessity to figure out how to sustain ourselves ties into that.
Well, resilience in food supply. I mean, as our world becomes more carbon, what do I want to say, deprived? Is that not the right word? Less prices of oil, oil go up and whatnot, I mean.
It's the consequences of actually using it up.
Need to be really focused on. I would like to see something about that addressed here, resilience of our, of our food.
I think.
Food supply needs to be somehow built into the agricultural section, because that's really important. And that's one of the things we're hearing more and more that we didn't hear so much, say, five years ago. And you could say in a way, I mean, the Brattleboro farmers market's been around for a long time, kind of like some of these arts things that initially came here thirty, forty years ago. We have the farmers market that started maybe back in the seventies or sixties, somewhere back there. And that was also because people came here, part of the back-to-the-land movement. It might have been part of that, but that got the agricultural stuff moving and small-scale farming that was here that maybe wasn't in a lot of other places. It might have been in Oregon or Washington State, again, those kind of enclaves where people were, or Northern California, say, where, when I look back to the sixties and seventies, where people were kind of in that movement. But that's the, sort of the, the predecessor to a lot of this that kept it going. And what I see happening now is almost people are retooling workshops, re, how to feed ourselves. People are looking at resilience and, in the food supply. And I think that needs to be built into the agriculture plan, most definitely.
Yeah, I think postal solutions too would have good numbers for you.
Yeah, and they need to be included here as a resource, for sure.
And NOFA, or the Strategic Farming Solution.
And that, um, part of the, the new governor's five steps for the state that he thinks he's going to work on, the fifth one was agriculture. And not that it's a huge part of the economy, but it, but it is. And it used to be a major part, more, a bigger part of the economy for the state with wheat and sheep and dairy a long time ago. And it's not to say that some of those trends, will things change? What's, what's the way the trends are going? I mean, I think it's going to radically change in the next few years. I don't think we've really seen the whole thing yet, but maybe you.
But I mean, yeah, those trends are definitely happening. Like huge California growers are buying land in northern Vermont to capitalize on, buy local, with, like Dole is, you know.
Really?
There's a lot of stuff going on, because it's clearly vibrant within here. And it's starting to, you know, sort of percolate up to more national and international levels.
Wow.
How many farms are there in the town of Brattleboro? Anybody know?
I saw a number of fifty-four.
Yep.
From the Ag Census. And I started questioning it, so I actually pulled it out of somewhere. But I thought that seemed high.
In Brattleboro itself or in Wyndham County?
Brattleboro.
No, Wyndham County, hundreds. It's way more than that.
No, that sounds about right.
Does it?
That seems about, there's a lot of small.
If you, yeah.
And it's, it's based on the agricultural census, so it's what, you know, it's who responds and.
Well, CSA is a kind of farm. I mean, it was, right. It's not, it's not that they're excluded, but it's.
I don't think how many.
Right.
Wow.
I, I thought, I remember fifty-four, but.
It's conceivable. I mean, I wouldn't, I was just gonna say something like fifty, so.
Okay.
I think I've talked to Drew about it. Drew's got numbers on this stuff. Um, this is a question directed at you to some extent, Dana, because of where you work. But is access to skilled labor an issue for local farmers?
It can be. It can be an issue for dairy farmers.
Right. So in the context, so in other words, if this was a different state, we'd have access to larger numbers of migrant la-, I mean, migrant laborers, for instance, and might be more connected to seasonal workers moving through. I'm not aware of large numbers of seasonal workers. I know that there are some associated with, with orchards and stuff.
Yeah.
But Duttons and, Duttons and Green Mountain Orchards stand out as users of.
Harlow.
And Harlow does too.
And some of the, yeah, the bigger.
So is, is labor shortage an issue? And if it was an issue, or how would we get it figuring out whether it is an issue or not?
I would say some types of industries, and specifically in dairy, because of the visa structure, federal level. It's, dairy is a, you know, there's a year-round need, and we only allow seasonal workers to come to work in the country easily. So.
Oh, okay.
So that's an issue. It's an issue with, with the dairies, because most of them are year-round.
Right.
Um.
So then, okay. Because I mean, those are the kinds of, I think, sort of somewhat practical questions that I think are, at this early point, relatively early point, still worth pursuing. I mean, they might, they might just pan out as non-questions once we talk to people. But it seems to me, you know, that would be an interesting point to make if that's, you know, if that, if that remains an issue.
For that matter, is there adequate curriculum that.
I was, because I was gonna make that link, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, the Career Centers.
The Career Center, right?
Work people on actually developing their ag curriculum. So they're actively.
Right.
Working on that now.
Right.
You know, there are sort of the projects going on, like you have the youth ag project.
Right.
Which, you know, it's training kids how to do everything, you know, start seasons, run a stand at the farmers market, all of that. And they're, you know, working with a mix of kids, a lot of average youth.
Right.
That sort of thing.
Some of those things need to be included in the goals to be achieved and the objectives. I mean, even though they're just beginning, they need to be there.
Right, right. Well, that was the reason why I was asking the labor question. So if, if there is a labor shortage, does that mean that there's a training thing that needs to happen? And if there's a training thing, then that's something that we can identify as a goal or an objective here, but also in the economic development chapter and, and other places.
I mean, we can identify that as.
Okay.
As a goal and then tie into, and maybe sort of having, you know, a conversation or a couple with the Career Center.
Right. And I know that we benefit enormously from a really effective UVM Extension Service worker. But I'm also aware that New Hampshire has a really strong focus on smallholder farmers as a part of their Extension Service. So they actually have a whole set, set of activities and training and pamphlets and information targeting niche farmers or, you know, and I, I'm not aware of the same thing being provided through the Extension Service in Vermont. And I see it increasingly in, in Western Massachusetts as well. So basically.
I mean, there are lots of organizations.
Yes, yeah, but I don't.
Pasture Network, or, you know, like all of those.
Right. And I don't know if UVM, I don't know if UVM is behind all those things, or did I know that the New Hampshire Extension, UNH Extension Service is directly, you know, connected to small-scale farming in a really strong way? And even things like sponsoring workshops on women and farming, right? So they figured out that large numbers of small-scale producers are in fact women. And so they have workshops and programs targeted at them as an audience, which I'm not aware of.
Well, we just had the, like, Women in Sustainable Ag Conference.
Right.
We just had, but that was just put on a month and a half ago. And that was a whole bunch of organizations coming together to plan that UVM Extension.
Okay.
All those players.
And I'm asking these questions to try and get any kind of trends that, that again, that we haven't thought of, but could possibly want to try and identify.
Yeah. I mean, trends are definitely, there is, you know, there is more training going on, and sort of more of a retooling and a refocusing on, on ag as both, you know, a means of economic development, a means of employment, and the way to feed ourselves going forward, as opposed to relying on huge agribusiness on the other side of the country and that sort of thing. I was just gonna say something else, I can't remember about organizations.
It's all right. Just, yeah, that's fine.
Well, like the arts, you know, they've had, you know, some, how to, how to, how to run an arts business, right? They've had some workshops like that.
Yeah.
In the Career Center stuff in, in general, are there seminars for people that want to run farms, helping them figure out the business side of it and how to make a living?
That's part of what's being planned with the Career Center. So not only the curriculum for, like, high school, yeah, but for continuing education.
Right.
But that's part of, you know, the whole, like, the seminar series that go on pretty regularly through UVM Extension.
Okay.
Through a bunch of the farming organizations, is all of that stuff, like tax stuff, you know, budgeting, how you start a farm business, how you start a value-added, you know, business, you know.
Does there need to be more visibility about all this kind of stuff?
And there's a lot of visibility in the farming community, you know, so it's a whole sub-section.
Yeah, I would say like, somewhat like the Huts Community, it's pretty well organized, it's pretty well organized once you get in.
Yeah, exactly.
But if you're not in.
Well, it's not that hard to get in to just.
Oh, so UVM Extension here, like Vern Grubinger.
Right.
He's the, you know, runs the, recruiting dairy growers association. So it's like one specific, like, that's located down here, part of Extension here, but.
Right.
It's a statewide organization.
I, I think it was easier to get into it when the Old Agway had the lobby and people would stick their, their little flyers up and they don't have a notice board and then the owner won't let the people, the staff have a notice board at the new site. So actually it is now harder to access information about what's going on. But it used to be, every time you walked in and out of the Old Agway, there were goats for sale and sheep.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we just sort of, as soon as you walked in, you go, oh, I wouldn't mind that. Or chickens or dogs or whatever it was. That's how you.
They need feedback about that.
Go to the farm section on Craigslist, man.
Yeah, it's wild. Yeah, out of control. Yeah, that's right.
I'm hunting all the time.
It's very, that's right. It's very vibrant. So I think.
My nurse gives away chickens to her patients.
Well, the D I V. is gonna start giving my goats and chickens with every permit now, so. So, start, start a permit so come with their own chicken. Yeah.
There's another aspect to agriculture that's not mentioned here either. It's processing and value, I mean, the new, no, no, I wasn't gonna go there. The, the new dairy company is value-added product. But more to have some of the goals to be achieved with objectives, to be looking at how to develop more value-added products, because that's really a piece, that's a key goal with agriculture. And if you look at the town of Hardwick, Vermont, again, not to, there's pros and cons there, but one of the things that they're really working on is the value-added product and where that goes. Some of it can go outside of New England, but also keep, you know, being sure that you serve your local area. So for both, for sales.
Yeah. One issue has been, there's a bit of a disparity also between them. Like, what happens across the state? Like, who gets the funding for the northern half of the state from like the state agency of ag? Yeah.
Are we shocked about that again? Are we shocked about that again?
And they're getting a lot more of the resources, that's where like the, you know, the mobile poultry slaughter unit is housed up north, so southern Vermont. Farmers, if they're going to access it, end up having to pay more for it.
So it needs to be a goal.
Flash freezer, there's a very, like, state-run, like, flash freezer for freeze.
Ooh, really?
Yeah.
Cool, where is, so where is this?
I think actually that might be in Hardwick.
Yeah, it could be.
Right, now you can just have it right at the back here.
The Jasper Farm Cheese Cellar.
You can just hold it out the window in a bit, no?
Resources, it's something, you know, I think I said something at some point about.
You mentioned the, the.
Regional parity and all that stuff, like when we're talking about internet access and all, it's the same.
Same deal.
Really, it follows the same places, yeah. The Wakefield Valley is full of all that stuff, and it has internet accents early on.
Yeah, and we're starting to, you know, like, the slaughterhouse open to Westminster, so there is like a, you know, local place for folks to bring their meat.
Right.
Bring their meat, bring their animals.
Animals to be, have them become meat. Future meat.
Yeah.
Well, like the.
But sort of taking an inventory of those kinds of things.
And Post Oil Solutions really working to have, um, Bellows Falls be a food hub? I mean, that's one of their projects, and they wanna have an incubator there with a kitchen that people can, or whatever, all these kind of processing places where people, small ag businesses can.
The Food Bank in Bradleboro's.
Yeah, the Food Bank coming here.
Right.
Maybe, or they, I mean, they have the commercial space, or they're putting that in for their own, like, for processing food.
Yeah.
You know, with the idea of maybe it becomes commercial kitchen space that folks can.
But there needs to be more, I mean, depends on how many farmers want it, but I think more people would access it, again, goals, process, processing in many ways.
Okay.
Yeah, so actually, from a food security standpoint, like the, the Food Bank is, um, trying to be very, trying to be mindful and cognizant of that, so like, not stepping on the toes of local farmers in terms of, there's always free food available, you know, donated food to distribute.
Right.
That's that.
Right.
Right.
Way with the local farming community.
Right. Now, the one thing that's come up in the economic development conversations recently is, um, if you like, the mismatch between niche producers producing, say.
Yes.
Six dozen eggs a week versus the demands for CNS of six thousand eggs a week. And their inability to write a contract with somebody who can only produce six dozen versus six thousand dozen eggs. I don't even think CNS should distribute eggs, 'cause.
But the scales are changing.
Okay.
Doesn't organic.
Vermont Academy is looking to source as much as it can from around here, so, you know, that scale is very different than.
Right.
Sort of like Pete and Jerry's.
So, yeah, but, so my question was gonna be something like, is there a, is there any movement or possibility that, um, egg producers or honey producers or goat's milk producers would get together and, you know, say, okay, look, individually, I can't be a supplier to, to wholesaler Pete. But if fifteen of us got together, we could, we could cooperatively, we could ensure that wholesaler Pete has, or Mary has enough every week of what they want.
Yeah.
But, so is.
I don't know how much of that is going on, like.
Right, informally.
Farm-to-school program is trying to do that.
Right.
Structural way, well, Farm-to-Plate is really looking to do that, so.
Right, okay.
We'll know more when that report comes out, like this coming week.
Right.
Sort of strategic plan, like the, the draft of that is released, and that is, you know, that's based on statewide stuff, but I think they'll give a pretty good picture of what's going on with some of that stuff.
Right.
Are there some networks around that you can do that informally now, if, if you know VA's, you know, like.
Buy a.
Five neighbors could get together and.
Yeah.
Make enough eggs for VA.
Yeah, or, or be in contact with VA, you know, know that VA is looking, is, is there some sort of, as I think the arts had said, you know, in arts Craigslist, I mean.
Right.
Not so far, folks, but, people like send emails, or there's, you know, like the, like Post Oil Solutions, like ListServe. There are a couple of ListServes where folks are all, it's like, putting stuff on, like, pork shares or whatever, yawn, selling ewes and. Some of that Craigslist stuff, but also some of those other things, or like figuring out, you know, slaughter regulations because they wanna do that, so that sort of thing. I imagine some of that.
Or.
Yeah.
Or just one, nominating one person to be the interface with a buyer from a wholesaler, right, so.
Yeah. I don't know.
I don't know how it would work, but, right, yeah. Okay.
There is that guy that, I don't know his name, but there was an article in the paper about him, a guy that was sort of a broker for, for food to the schools.
Hans.
Hans Estrin.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's under UVM Extension also.
Okay, that's exact, yeah, right, that's the kind of.
Farm to food, I can't remember that one.
Farm, farm, farm to school.
It's a list.
It's called Farm to School.
Is it Farm to School?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I get those sort of emails.
Donated their money.
Right.
Yeah, but it's like, yeah, the farms that are participating, this is what they have this week, and, you know.
Yep. Right.
Pounds of sweet potatoes.
Yeah, and they have a, a whole system of how they do that, computerized and.
Could probably do it with smartphones and just do it like almost in real time.
Hans came and he gave us a talk at the Bradleboro Hospital about, about it.
Right.
And it was pretty amazing what they.
It's a pretty well organized, like, you know, where arts, they had mentioned they need better information sharing, it sounds like.
And again, northern Vermont is way ahead on that too. I mean, I just picked up a calendar at the Bradleboro Food Co-op that was a Farm-to-School calendar, and I thought maybe it was for all over the whole state. It turns out it's for the Green Mountain Farm-to-School Program, which was a whole northern Vermont thing again, listing something like thirty farms that participate in this.
Right.
Program up there and how org- I mean, it's, it's just a, a couple steps probably ahead of what's happening.
Okay, so there you go, that's a trend.
Yes.
All right, so the trend, the comparison is, there's other parts of the state that are further along the road with doing that kind of, whatever you wanna call it, network-y thing in the agriculture sector, and, you know, Wyndham County and or Bradleboro either is there or lagging a little bit. What do they need to do to get to be at least that good, or if not better? And so, can we focus on that for the next five years? That's a perfect.
Yes.
Transition from trend to goal to objective, right?
Yeah, yeah, the same with processing, food processing, yeah, and I'm aware.
I think at Buffalo, the Rowland Area Farm-to-Food Network, they, it's an awesome network, and it's really well-run, and they.
Yeah, I know some of the people involved.
They're really tight, but yeah, it'd be great if Wyndham County, Bradleboro, whatever, can replicate something like that.
Right.
I don't know that that's, there's all this stuff out there, but I know there's something else, like.
So support.
Right, and I feel like there's something going on in Franklin County and, and Massachusetts at the same time, that's.
Yeah.
Pretty, so it might be, you know, even talking to the people like down there.
Yeah.
Those sinister people down.
The other thing about.
We're like a wolf mask anyway, right?
So it's after eight, if we're gonna do what we set out to do tonight, we probably have to move on to natural resources.
Yeah. This has been good, though.
I'd just like to mention one other thing, though, about availability of food for low-income people, which comes under ag somehow, um, and food resilience, so somehow.
Uh, yeah, I think actually.
I don't know where that would actually come, be in there, but unless that comes as another chapter or something.
There's some interesting, complicated trends in there. I know that food manufacturers, food producers, you know, of the, of the finished product, like bakeries and dairies and so forth, and supermarkets and wholesalers generate a whole lot less waste food than they used to because of just-in-time delivery systems and much better inventory control. So it used to be, you know, the whatever didn't get sold at the supermarket last night was day-old bread, which was perfectly viable as bread as long, and if you really needed it, was that, they don't, they're not generating the same amounts of surplus food anymore, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So there's that problem. On the other hand, the drop-in center is holding its own, you know, even though the recession is on and it's pretty grim, the donations are still pretty strong. I think they benefit enormously from CNS and other providers. And then the last part about that is, I think that, um, Post Oil Solutions, at various local communities, have begun to get involved, um, with local food pantries or food, you know, food shelves, and at the Food Bank itself, having a facility here in Bradleboro.
And how that, how that affects agriculture, though, like with the gleaning, Post Oil is gleaning, and they set up farmers' markets with farmers who will cater. Mostly, there's a little farmers' market on Tuesday on Elliott Street, and there's another one that was out at, in West Bradle, West Gate, and, um.
That's right, right. Yeah, that's actually, yes, that would be good to pay attention to.
Somehow that's pieced in here somehow.
And then, I don't know if any of the, any fa- local farmers, for instance, through farmers' markets or CSAs would take, um.
Yeah, they do.
The debit.
The debit cards.
Yeah, and the farmers' market here does.
Right, so that's cool, all right, and that should be included.
And that was, and as a trend, we were one of the first, if not in this state, in, in, in the, in the country maybe at large. Tim Stevenson could give you that, from Post Oil could give you some of those kind of statistics, 'cause they sort of pat themselves on the back for that kind of stuff.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah.
Good. All right, do we wanna move on to?
Natural resources.
Yeah.
So, um, thanks for the good discussion.
Yeah.
So natural resources. Sue?
All right, so this, um, has had a first cut from both Town Plan Advisory Committee has, has commented on the previous draft. Conservation Commission has commented on goals and objectives and, you know, what do they.
So what we have here has been commented on by both of them?
Uh, the goals, objectives, and actions were not commented on by the Town Plan Advisory Group. They made comments onto the, more of the outline. The goals, objectives, and actions were done by the Conservation Commission, who felt really strongly about addressing invasive species. I know we've talked about here at the Planning Commission, talking about low-impact development, um, in this draft is a discussion of fluvial erosion hazard. What kind of direction does the Planning Commission wanna take on that in the next five years? And then also big for the Conservation Commission was the, uh, the trails, um, and expanding the trail network and making it accessible to the urban area, you know, east of ninety-one. So that's kind of, kind of themes, I guess, or the direction of where they, and what I've gotten out of Planning Commission meetings, um, the direction to go for the next five years. This is a heavily inventoried, um.
Yeah.
Chapter of the plan, so the inventory is kind of extensive, and it'll be an addendum to the plan.
I have a question in the vision statement, um, about halfway through, it says, "We will preserve our natural areas and our town regulations will promote ecologically responsible development." Is that too vague, or is that specific enough to allow us to support kinds of things that we might wanna do?
Um, I think for the vision, it's, it's okay.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I like that that was there, but thinking of, I guess in a vision, it, it's different than specifics, I was thinking of jam golf and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, no, it's definitely not specific for jam golf, but it, yeah.
We don't have to be jammy with a vision statement.
We don't have to be jammy-stinking.
Mister, sir chairperson, I had added up, uh, the time in here showing that it should be about eight o'clock when we were done, and so, um, uh, do you guys have quorum anyways?
We do.
Be of quorum, and, and I don't support natural resources anyways.
At all.
I believe in paving the earth and.
You like them really unnatural.
So anyways, I was going to.
Ten-story buildings in downtown Bradleboro.
I was going to, to ask for the honor of, of leaving early.
That's a heck of an honor.
Right, there you go.
Congratulations.
It's unnatural.
You've achieved it.
You've gotta, you've gotta always be pessimistic with these numbers, though, 'cause I added them up and they add up to, you know, to, to two hours, eight o'clock, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
You should always add, you should always add an extra like half an hour, and they're just, and then, and then we'll always be pleased.
All right.
Bye, see you next time.
Yeah.
Look for my stuff on them.
I will, you know, shoot me, shoot me an email about that if you think about it, would it remind me, 'cause I would always remember.
Okay, so do we wanna hit the trends then?
Yeah.
Zip into this?
Yes, the, the first one, I think, needs to be reworked a little bit, but the point of the first one is that municipalities aren't buying up land. Any land, municipality, the town is not buying up land, I mean, minus the rec fields, obviously, but, you know, it, it. Most of the conservation efforts are by private conservation groups, or, you know, Vermont Land Trust or something like that, you know, like Lock Family Farm was, or, that, that farm was bought by initiative groups. With the assistance of other organizations, so.
It wasn't public at all.
Yeah, so, you know, this chapter is not gonna be calling for the town to go out and purchase lots of land.
Right.
That's kind of the setting for that first trend. And then there's the invasive species, um, the fluvial erosion, as we spent a lot of time discussing, and also the, the watershed approach to improving water quality. And I see that my example from earlier, that there's greater public access to, to public trails, I got removed, and I think that's because of my consternation about what's, what can I put numbers to, as opposed to what do we know anecdotal.
What got removed?
Uh, there's more, greater trail access for the public in Bradleboro, recreational trail access.
But there should be more access.
That is true.
Know that there is.
Yeah.
We have a hard time.
It is true.
We know it's true, we just don't know how much is true.
But I think it's okay, I mean, based on our previous discussion, I can put it back in.
Right.
No proof, in other words.
So you're gonna put it back in?
Yeah, I'll put it back in.
Then the only other thing for a trend, which is, I'm looking, we're both looking for, Sue and I discussed this last week, we're looking for guidance, I guess, is that, um, at least with regard to invasive species, and to some extent even, um, fluvial erosion and the role of state and federal governments in watershed, um, planning approaches. We think that one of the trends that natural resources are, um, experiencing is global planet change. And so, we're aware that that is either A, thoroughly accepted, well-accepted and not controversial, or B, actually not accepted by some members of the community very vehemently, and so, um, we like A.
Yeah.
But we're aware of the presence of B. So, um, I think as a discussion about nat- I think it's impos- almost impossible to have a meaningful discussion about natural resources in the town plan without using the term like climate change. And I think one of the trends that we're witnessing, I think you could observe trends that are associated with climate change.
You could call it climate disruption instead of change, and it might.
Actually, many of your objectors to climate change, if you put a comma and say, whether man-made or natural, comma, usually they're, usually the objections.
I usually just like to have a little picture of the flat earth next to it. It's generally the way I like to do it, 'cause that wouldn't change nearly so much, and I think that's the benefit of it, which we should be working for. So, um, yep, 'cause it would be very hard to tilt it.
Yeah.
That language should definitely be included.
Okay, and a little picture of the flat earth?
Guess we don't have to say man-made or anything like that.
All right.
Certainly not, not catering to very, you know, sort of small segments of the population.
Okay. I think, yeah.
In my opinion, unwilling to wrestle with the facts.
All right.
Some of the town leadership.
I mean, the question is, is it a trend or not, I think it's a trend.
The only thing bad about that, really, and, you know, I mean, I, I think it's ridiculous, but that, I would hate to have, um, I would hate to have, have there be some substantial objection to the plan based on that kind of language.
Yes.
And that was where we were when we, when we wrote the fluvial erosion, um, stuff. You know, I mean, it's silly, but, I mean, in my opinion. I'll say it right on camera.
We're not talking about harsh language, I mean, just factual.
Just, just, just an acknowledgement that.
Language that's.
Right.
Accepted by, you know.
So if average temperatures are going up, and therefore the habitat is becoming more accommodating of bugs and things like, um, the mosquito, you know, West Nile virus, you know, it's clear that it's, you know, fifty years ago, probably wouldn't have survived here for a couple of different reasons. One is, it wouldn't have gotten here because globalization wasn't as advanced as it is, and it certainly wouldn't have lasted, uh, because it wasn't, the micro, you know, the climate wasn't as accommodating, and now it is. and it certainly wouldn't have lasted because it wasn't, the micro, you know, the climate wasn't as accommodating, and now it is. That's, that's a real issue, you know, you could point, that's an example of what I'm trying to get at, I guess.
Well, the climate-
I believe it, you know, and, but that doesn't mean it's settled in everyone's mind, that's all I'm saying. So let's just hold that as, you know.
But the maple grow, I mean, there are people who, whether they acknowledge climate change or not, are, agree that there are shifts, like you're saying, in temperature that will affect things like the maple industry, the ski industry. People who make their living off of snow plowing last, I mean, we only had our driveways plowed three times last year, so if that was going to be your economic engine for the winter, you lost out big time, you know?
Right.
So, okay.
Okay, good, all right. Sue, do you want to move on to goals?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Well, I do.
Okay.
Everybody want to move on to goals?
Sure.
All right.
Oh, I can just say that invasive species is actually a trend, and there's a ton of invasive species pressure in southern North.
Right.
Yes.
Half of the state does not yet see, but that's what's expected.
And is the path of those invasive species somehow connected to traffic on 91?
No, I think that some, like, because it, it depends on where they've come. I mean, some are coming from the west, some are coming from the east. Yeah, I mean, it's, because that, that's a lot of it's-
Right, okay, I'm just asking.
Stuff on your boat. Take from lake to river, river to lake.
Right, right, just-
It just, it depends on what the invasive is.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, so is, is it an objective? Or, so if a goal is to stop the invasive species, I don't really know how we would do it, or do we worry about that later? Kind of like a goal is to improve economic development and worry about a policy later?
Don't know if you could, an objective could be that you could increase public awareness of invasives. You could make more commitment of public resources to eradicating them. Or you could, you know, impose requirements on DPW to make sure that if they were to buy topsoil or something from somewhere else, that it was, you know, there's all sorts of subtle things you could do.
So for the level of a town plan,
Yep.
we recognize invasive species are a trend.
Yep.
And that it's a problem.
Yeah.
And pretty much, and that, and that as we can, we're going to address it by policies later.
Right.
Is that, not quite the language, but-
Yeah, and I think even if you want to just be sort of opportunistic about it, if you're going to apply for a grant, for instance, to deal with invasive species that hang out in the retreat meadows, acknowledging that it's an issue in the town plan is, is lending support that you could then use to write the grant to deal with invasive species, right?
Okay.
Yep?
That's something that the Conservation Commission would also have knowledge of, kind of. That would be, I think, one of their goals, kind of things.
Right, and I can't remember the thing that does, there's something that lurks.
It's the Eurasian milkweed.
That's right. Okay. Okay, so moving on to goals then. Anything in there that's missing? Anything there that should be taken out? Anything there that should be wrangled with?
Is the, number seven, about the greenway linkages, it says recreational-
Hang on, we're up to, we're up on-
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, these are kind of the broad ones, so the Conservation Commission felt strongly about being more active in education. So that's the first one, and then there's the wildlife piece, the open space piece, the water resources. And the fifth one, I might play around with the wording, but that's kind of the flooding piece. But also steep slopes, steep slopes is-
Yep.
Off of what?
Steep slopes.
Steep slopes, yeah.
Steep slope development.
Yeah.
Is it too much in goal three to say encourage open space preservation, enjoyment and utilization? Or is that kind of getting off on something else?
I don't know that I'd-
Encourage preservation of open space for enjoyment?
I don't think that needs to be in the goal, I'm just trying to-
I might switch out utilization for participation to make it consistent with-
With the arts.
With the arts. Has a slightly less utilitarian sound to it.
I mean, I think that one strategy to get at enjoyment and participation is to preserve it.
Yeah.
And keep it open.
I mean, I think, yeah.
So I think, I don't see it really in the goal.
Yeah.
That might be more in the objective.
Yeah, and the goals are more action. Each of those first words is like-
But then, I guess I would, if we're going to preserve open space-
Could be protect, encourage and protect, if you've used protect before. There's a difference between protecting open space-
Right.
And encouraging open space enjoyment and utilization. Those are two very different things.
Yeah. Let me think about Dana. Yeah. Okay. All right, anything else for goals? Do you want to move along to objectives then?
Did you say the Conservation Commission worked on these goals?
Yes.
Okay.
They've had input.
Yeah, let's go to objectives. The director's giving us a signal.
Yeah.
Aye.
Ten minutes.
We have ten minutes, our recording capability runs out in ten minutes. If we go past that, then our technician has to sort of reboot. So we're going for ten minutes to be done.
Yep, that's right.
That's when the private session starts, and the public can't see.
Yeah, you know, I'm talking about the private session on camera. Just a tip.
Yeah, ain't no priv, ain't private no more.
I didn't know they were.
So how about these objectives? Are we-
Real good.
Do you have any questions, additions?
When you talk about the first one, which is promote, sponsor, organize events, it makes me think of some of the resources for natural resources and which I don't see. Like when I, we look at the arts and what kind of organizations there are in town that are part of the arts. Say Bonnie Bayle and Beak, Beak does work around natural resources, education, taking that programs to the school. And I would like to see that, that, I don't know, where-
Well, my-
In the inventory.
Inventory or in the appendix.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and other organizations like that, Vermont Wilderness School, Adventures in Outdoor Learning, Adventure Five, whatever it is, all these programs that do work with, in their own way, the outdoors. Croca used to be around here, it's now in New Hampshire, but those kinds of organizations need to be a part of this because they're really working to educate people about natural resources. They would call it something different, but-
Well, it's an appreciation thing.
Yeah.
Well, and the elf program in schools.
I was gonna say-
That's really the science curriculum in elementary schools, and so.
Were you in elf, Gary?
I was in elf for five years.
So was I.
Yeah.
Can't you tell?
I can still do the puppet show, really, the voices and all that stuff.
All right, let's not go there, okay? I'm still having bed and bedroom for that.
Let's wrap this up, people.
I have one concern about an objective.
Yeah.
Actually, a couple. So the one that's reduced fragmentation of natural landscape.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just, I just don't know where, I'm, I'm concerned with some of these that, that I wouldn't want them to contradict with things around land use or housing when we go to create other objectives. So I just, I just don't know how we look out for that in the future. I guess you guys have written these things, maybe you have strategies for that.
I think natural landscape, natural landscape might be too broad. I might be more comfortable with something like wilderness habitat. So typically, what we try and get at there is mostly animals, but, you know, like deer wintering yard. I mean, if, for instance, there's, there's maps of deer wintering yards, and if development was proposed that conflicted with a mapped deer wintering yard, even under Act 250, that would be, that would be an item that would be identified as an issue. If it was smaller than Act 250, then we would hope that our mapping ability, we were up for it. But by, that's really what we're trying to get at. And just in general, both for birds and animals, what we're looking to do, well, if you've got two identical parcels of land, except one is, if you think of it as tiles, you know, like a mosaic, and you've got two identical, or two 10-acre parcels, and one of these parcels happens to be in a wildlife corridor.
Corridor, yep.
And then the other one isn't, then conservation values that you would employ would ascribe the one that's in the corridor is having more value to protect and preserve than the one that's not.
Right.
So if you were going to try and resolve a land use issue, you would say, look, your 10-acre subdivision proposed for this corridor 10-acre parcel is not viewed favorably, whereas yours in this 10-acre parcel that is not, is something that we could deal with. Right? So I might change it for wilderness habitat.
I like that better.
You got others in there, Jim, that you thought were gonna conflict? Because it's important to get those things sorted out, really.
Yeah, I just, I just was worried someday, four years down the road, about having to go defend it because we contradicted ourselves.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that same thing would come under number six, too, just to be sure.
That's what I was wondering about.
Yeah.
And, and is that language there?
Yeah, I know that that one can be written clearer, but specifically, in my mind, gets to certain deficiency that I see in one of our regulations.
Yeah.
How do we define open space in unit developments? And so I think that that needs to be better.
We, we have some-
And even in subdivision regulations in general, I mean, let's-
We use open space, and people, people often, we use the term open space, but people often think that we mean conservation for, you know, as a synonym for open space. And then in Act 250 proceedings, open space and conservation space are not synonyms. And there are times even when we don't even mean them as synonyms either, but there's a way in which it plays out in the subdivision and the zoning regs, that's really what we're getting at.
Yeah, and also, also for, we're requiring open space, do we want it to be-
Concern, yeah.
Not, not concerned, but do we, you know, how do we want to define it? Do you want, if, if this is an amenity to this development, do you want it to be all steep and unusable? Or, you know, do you want it to be an amenity?
That's right.
You know, not just the leftover land that you can't develop, so, you know, putting some-
Right.
Something on that.
Yeah, and the next one also is that same thing, what greenway linkage is. You know, is that too broad a term also, in that same context?
No, I think that greenway linkage is actually pretty well-understood in land use.
I mean, we could think about, like, doing text boxes, what do we mean by that?
Yeah, I'm happy to explain to the public what a greenway linkage is, but it's a well-established concept.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure.
Like a view share is a well-established concept now, too.
Yeah, okay.
It's not like you have to go, hmm? People, you know. Oh, no, 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 not like that at all.
Number four, under actions to be taken, does that fall under that same sort of, be careful not to contradict ourselves? Think, I know we're under objectives, but we're taking time and we're covering this.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think if we're successful in doing number four,
Yeah.
then we would eradicate any potential contradictions at that point.
Okay.
Right now, we don't have anything that does four.
Okay. So we've got about a minute and a half left.
Is that about pressure or what?
Well, what the heck. The pressure build like, isn't it?
One thing that this outline doesn't address is structures in the floodway. And so it's, it's a big one on there. We have structures in the floodway. Is it, I know, is that something we want to tackle in the next five years?
Was that sort of incorporated into five, the adopt the fluvial erosion hazard regs? Does it address structures in the floodway? I'll just say you can-
Well, maybe no new ones.
It somehow sep, I mean, I think in ways, some ways it's separate from that, too. There are some structures in the floodway that would not necessarily be captured by fluvial erosion hazard regulations.
Yeah, yeah, floodway and fluvial are different.
Right, I think there's hardly any, but there are some.
Well, one's preventing.
There's a whole bunch of them, that if we were ever going to do anything about it, we would have to put something about it in the town plan, because it's going to be expensive and it's going to be really, really hard to deal with. And so I think that is something, it's a very good point. I think it's something we'll either have intentionally put in there or not.
Potentially keep out.
Yeah, but it could, it's a, it's a big lead in.
Yeah, it's, we're gonna have to be clear about what we're doing there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it could even be an objection when we go over this in public meeting, too.
So I believe we're begin, we're about to go off.
Yeah?
We're off. No, okay. So how about if we relegate all, all the other comments for now, to send them to Sue?
Yep.
And we'll, we'll pick up, well, not where we went up, but on the next agenda items that are next moved.
That's great.
My second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.